I will call to order, bear with me, I will back up one step into our vision and mission statement, then we will call to order. So as a friendly reminder for folks listening and visiting with us in person, the vision of the Milton School District is that we believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. And the mission that supports that vision is that the School District of Milton, in partnership with the community, prepares our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. And on that note, I will call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, November 13th, and invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are you aware of any changes to the agenda, Mr. Donner?
No changes to the agenda.
I would like to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All right, motion from Dave that is seconded by Rick to approve our agenda. Questions? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Minutes which are included in board docs from our previous meeting.
I would move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on October 23rd, 2023 as presented.
Second.
That is also Dave's motion seconded by Rick to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Are there any questions on those? I hear none, so all in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Vouchers customarily follow, and they will tonight. I'll let Dave go.
I move to approve the general checking account vouchers, totally $1,136,208 as at the end, as presented. I'll second that.
Dave's motion is seconded by John to approve our checking account vouchers in the amount he just enumerated. Does anyone have questions on the vouchers? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? We have an approval of the vouchers. I picked up the sheet, Rich, we have no one signed up. So we will roll on, and you are onstage with Red Hawk Highlights.
We have a lot of great things happening in our district that I want to highlight. Starting with Veterans Day celebrations, last week across all our schools, and particularly our elementary schools, students invited family members who are veterans or actively serving in the military for special recognition ceremonies. So it's a great opportunity for us to honor both staff members and the community members and parents who are or have served in our armed forces. I want to highlight some members of our staff that we recognized. Don Amundson, Tim Baldry, Christian Bennett, Kelly Bondo, Linda Goodman, Ryan Cranky, Regine Layland, Jim Martin, and Officer Ryan Schirr, veterans of the armed forces. We have the Milton West Read-a-thon has been going on since the start of November with over 16,000 reading minutes in their fundraiser. And a great thing about that program is that Milton High School students have been making weekly trips to West to read to and with Swet, Milton West students. So it's a great opportunity for some partnerships between high school students and Milton West students. He's visited Milton City Hall. Third graders have been studying the question, what do people, or how do people make government work in literacy class? They've been studying that question, and today they went to City Hall, got some information from Mayor Welch and City Clerk Salvo about how government works here in Milton. So another excellent, real-life learning opportunity for our students. This past weekend, Milton High School put on the Wizard of Oz play. So congratulations to the cast, the crew, the musicians, and volunteers. It was an excellent performance by everyone involved. Congratulations to Abby Landrum, who's our music teacher and director of the play. And they had all the cast and volunteers that were involved. And coming up in December, a lot of our different schools have holiday concerts, so we'll be looking for some dates and times, and we encourage people to attend those. Back on November 8th, Milton School District Communities supported purple and showed support for Nicholas Mao. That was his sixth birthday, and Nicholas is battling a very serious health condition and in need of a heart transplant. So we showed support for him by wearing purple across the district and working with his family for that District-wide Spirit Day. And we're very pleased with the support that was shown on that day. Back on November 6th, at our Professional Development Day, we had some safety training that I want to highlight. All staff participated in critical incident response training, is led by experts from Mercy Health, Rock County's trauma preparedness center. We want to thank the trainers as well as officers from the Milton Police Department, the Janefield Police Department, and Rock County Sheriff's Department. They joined school-level teams after the main presentation for breakout sessions to talk about how we respond to safety situations at each of our schools. Those partnerships with local law enforcement and our schools are really important to help make sure that our schools are safe and secure places. The Milton FFA had their national convention earlier this month, and they received three-star chapter recognition. That's recognizing our FFA as among the best, one of only four chapters in the entire state to receive that honor. And it's a statement to the hard work, dedication, and leadership of our students, advisors, alumni, and past FFA members. We had a staff member receive recognition, Sarah Brechtel. Here's our journalistic publications teacher at Milton High School. She advises the student newspaper and the yearbook staff. Ms. Brechtel was recognized by the Kettle Moran Press Association as the Nancy Becker Student Newspaper Advisor of the Year. So congratulations to Sarah Brechtel on that. And interesting side note, that Nancy Becker, Student Newspaper Advisor of the Year, is named after, obviously, Nancy Becker, who is a former Milton teacher who has left an enduring legacy in student publications. The School District of Milton last week also received the Wisconsin School PR Association's Spectrum Award, so congratulations to Carrie Cleba, our communications coordinator. This award was for last spring's social media series on awesome alumni, stellar staff. So if we recall, it highlighted staff members who are Milton graduates. That media series was awarded the Spectrum Award, which is the best in category, or the best in the state of Wisconsin. So congratulations to Carrie and to all of our staff members who were highlighted in that series. And then as our fall sports have ended, we have a few things that we want to recognize. Four of our girls golf athletes were recently recognized as academic all-state players by the Golf Coaches Association. So congratulations to Dwayne Jaskula, Holly Moorheart, Emma Steinkie, and Bethany Vidri on being all-state academic. Red Hawk swimmer Ella Schultz qualified for state in the 100-meter breast stroke and competed this past Saturday. Congratulations to Ella. And we had our first official signing ceremony of the school year, where student athletes who are going on to compete after high school sign. I want to highlight that Glenn Baker officially committed to play softball at Butler University. Brett Beal committed to play golf for UW-Green Bay. Carter Smith to play soccer for UW-Stevens Point. Boon Jackson to play baseball at M A T C. And Charlie Colber to play baseball for Long Island State. And our winter sports are ramping up and beginning their first weeks of practice, so we wish all of our student athletes the best of luck in their upcoming season.
Very good. Any questions to Rich? Congrats to everybody District-wide, that is an impressive list. All right, thank you, Rich, we will roll on. Rick will share with us the details of an HR meeting from, I think, last week, it sounds like.
Last month, actually.
Oh, wow, since we met.
Please bear with me tonight, folks, on a little course. The HR committee met on October 25th. First item on the agenda is discussion on the superintendent evaluation form and process. The HR committee had a discussion on the W A S B superintendent evaluation process and forms. The session featured a presentation by a W A S B consultant, excuse me, outlining their processes and emphasizing the significance of superintendent evaluations. Currently, the HR committee is not going to be endorsing the acquisition of W A S B process and forms. Chris will work with the district's legal counsel to review our existing process, timeline, and evaluation questions. The superintendent evaluation process will be starting soon, in the next few weeks, and detailed information will be shared out to those participating in the process soon. Any questions on that topic? Next up is a discussion and recommendation on the 2023-24 district teacher intern duties. In June of this past year, excuse me, of this year, the Board of Education granted approval for three general education interns to join the Northside area during the fall and spring semesters of the upcoming 2023-24 school year. In anticipation of the second semester slated for January 24, the administration proposes the hiring of an additional nine interns. Having approval, these nine interns will be allocated to various schools. The attached memo on board docs has more information on which schools they will be assigned to. The district lists teaching interns through the Wisconsin Improvement Program Teaching Internship Program, designed for students during completion of their teaching program. Interns will be onsite five days per week, mirroring working hours of full-time teachers. During the spring semester, the interns will teach 50% of the time, dedicating the remaining hours to observation and collaborative planning with fellow educators. Compensation for an intern will be set at $45,000 per semester, with an additional $500 fee remitted to the Department of Public Instruction per intern. The inclusion of nine interns will incur total cost, $45,000, addressing their needs and health challenges and secondary problems. This is an action item?
Correct.
Chris or Rich, did you have anything to add to that?
I do not.
Do you have a question? I would forecast this is going to be successful, that you're going to see this request again in the future. Is there a plan to do for some metrics to report back to us, Hollis? And what about the last, next year?
And when we were, yes, to that, even when we were setting up our staffing levels last year, last spring, John Lyon reported out on how the leaders at Northside, that process and that framework and that collaboration with teachers had gone. So yes, we will be bringing that back, and I'm not sure what those staffing needs are going to be for the 24 or 25 year, but there may be what's in your needs at that time.
Chris, that's on the radar.
Yeah, absolutely.
Chris, can you talk a little bit about how, because I know we had interns in the past, the difference between a student-teacher and intern? I know there's commonalities, but they're not the same. Can you kind of just talk to the difference in the, or specific focus, I guess, of the intern position?
So the intern position, as Rick had outlined, is more of a teaching role versus a student-teacher. And the intern applicant has to apply through their university. And so we received applications from, for example, the University of Whitewater. And those applications, they say, here's what we have at Milton, used interns for the upcoming spring semester. And so that the administration reviews those needs, and then says, yes, we would like X number. And that would be in special ed, that would be in general ed, wherever that league is determined by the building principles.
Chris, can you also share what the expectations are for the Interns Day?
So what I know, a lot of the expectation is that they would be teaching half-time under the supervision of a classroom teacher. And there would be then 50% of their time, the other half of the day, would be observing the classroom teacher, and also working with DLC groups, working with groups of students, and learning about what a teacher does at that level.
Where are these students at as far as academic path? Are they close to graduation, like student-teacher versus intern? Or are they further ahead, or what's the difference there?
They're actually, I believe, at the same spot. So you're looking at a student-teacher, or you're looking at an intern. So that's not like you have to move from student-teacher to an intern. They're both at that same spot. So the interns that we currently have in place for the fall semester, they will be graduating in January and applying for their DPI licenses.
So they're in their, if they're in their last semester, but they're, but this is done in place of their student-teacher.
That's correct.
It's clearly at the lower grade levels. How an intern gets linked to a single teacher for the middle school or the high school, are they more department-focused rather than a specific person? You know, for example, if they're at that max intern, are they, are they with one single path teacher in that case?
They are, yeah. They are with a specific teacher, because that specific teacher has to have training in how to supervise students or student teachers. And so there is a training that UW-Whitewater requires of each intern or cooperating teacher. So they're not just throwing them at the district. The district has to assure that our cooperative teachers are trained to be able to help with that supervision.
We really see two, two main benefits to utilizing the intern program. One is it provides an additional adult in classrooms, whether it's working with large groups of students or working with small groups of students. The other is it gives us a in for hiring people who are becoming teachers. We, over the past couple of years, have hired some really outstanding teachers who interned for us, and they got to know our district, and we got to know them, and we got a permanent job opening. It gave us a head, a head start on other districts in that process. And as it becomes more and more difficult to fill positions at times, that really is a nice benefit for our school district.
One of the things I really like about this proposal is that as we looked at the DPI information, and there is, there's the talk, you know, trying to focus additional energy in places where, if we use. We talked about the kids that were well, it's an efficient support to focus area, and they'd be able to make one-time pushes towards those areas with people to help us, and it makes a lot of sense. And so that I, program. With that in mind, I would make a motion to approve the addition of nine intern positions to support staff FTE for the second semester of the 2023. How is the year as presented?
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Dave, as you just heard, that is seconded by Jennifer, to add nine intern positions to our support staff FTE, as you just heard. Does anyone have questions beyond that, or on that topic? All in favor of that motion, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion clearly passes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda was the discussion on 23-24 comprehensive benefits. Administration has initiated a comprehensive review of, excuse me. Administration has initiated a comprehensive review of the insurance benefits offered by the Banjo Conference in Rock County School District, collaboration with USI Insurance Consulting Vendor. The HR team and USI are currently in the process of collecting and organizing data pertaining to health insurance, dental insurance, life, optional life insurance, short-term and long-term disability, which option. Intern Department has also conducted surveys on high-cost benefits within the Banjo Conference in Rock County School District. The next phase involves the analysis of the compiled data by Rich, Ross, and Chris, leading to the convening of the Benefits Advisory Group meetings with staff members, Al Yager from USI, and myself. HR team has also, has also been spending time recruiting members for that Benefits Advisory Group, and as of right now, they have successfully enlisted 18 members, including both new and returning participants. Any questions on that topic? Next item is the discussion and review of staff report template. HR committee and administration recommends discontinuing the inclusion of salary amounts in the staff report. The adjustment aims to establish consistency in the reporting of salaries to the Board of Education by the resources. For instance, returning teacher administrator and supervisor contracts along with their respective amounts will be shared before under executive content in board docs. New teacher information, including salary details, will no longer be included in the staff report, reserved at level of confidentiality or public review. Under this change, the board will still have access to salary information through relevant documents such as contracts, letters of employment, and letters of appointment, all of which will be attached in executive content. The Board of Education also reviews and approves teacher compensation initiatives in open session, along with approving support staff starting hourly rates. These hourly rates are for all regular seasonal and temporary occasional employees. This modification addresses concerns raised by staff members over the years to questions of the public disclosure of their compensation on the staff report. Any questions on that topic? Okay, and the last item we had was the update on post-employment tier communication to staff. The HR team provided an update by HR committee outlining the communication, plan, and strategy for the post-employment benefits. The communication was sent to staff who are eligible on the Tier 1A, or those who are retiring at the end of this school year. This past summer, staff qualifying for Tier 2 had a one-time open enrollment option to left Tier 3. And back in September, the HR department had shared those final employee counts with the Board of Education. On October 6th, communication was sent out to the Tier 3 staff, but not yet created their 403B with WBA member benefits to do so. If the employee did not do that by October 31st, the district will have, will do that on the employee's behalf. On November 1st, communication was sent out to all Tier 3 staff explaining that the November 15th payroll will include their first 403B employer contribution, and a retro 403B contribution will be made from the July 5th through October 30th. Any questions on that? All right, that's all I had to do.
All right. Busy, busy times for the HR folks. Thank you for all of your time and effort on those topics. All right, four on the agenda is a Finance Committee meeting report from John.
Thanks, Joe. On November 8th, we held a Finance Committee meeting. There were three items on the agenda. First up was a presentation from Stephen Shons in regards to proposed capital maintenance projects covering the high school stadium accessibility. Next item is two resolutions in regards to OPEP trust members. I believe Ross is going to cover that here shortly. And tonight, we will vote on those two resolutions. The last item was the start of the initial budget planning for the 24-25 school year. Arguably, we feel like we just got done with 23-24, but I'd like to thank Ross and Rich for their preliminary information, and look forward to continuing this conversation over the next couple of months.
Just a quick note on the resolution that is before the board tonight. There's a fact sheet, as well as a copy of the resolution in board docs today. Quick highlights is the OPEP Trust run-up through CSU 6 is currently in the process of identifying a new depository for all the OPEP trust funds, as well as a notice of change in ownership for the PMA group itself. These were items that were presented to the OPEP trust group for CSU 6 earlier this year. However, since we weren't part of this until July 1st, a lot of this is going to be for us now, and I'm learning about it in the last couple of weeks. So what this does is it's not meant to cause any concern, it's a regulatory need for us to take into consideration these resolutions, and simply affirm that as a member of the CSU 6 Cooperative, we are authorizing the change in depository and ownership of PMA.
And point out, the question I asked at the committee level was that there are several dozen school districts that are doing the exact same thing.
Correct.
Also, one point that I remembered was, we get a five-year rate guarantee.
Correct. The Cooperative Agreement does not change as a part of this. In fact, PMA is assured that a current investment agreement won't have, won't change their fee or range of the next five years.
And so I think one of the takeaways from our discussion was, Ross said we didn't plan on the change happening, it's just not the right way in any way. At the end of the day, this kind of business changes hands between different representations regularly. This happens, this happened by the time that we joined on, but at the end of the day, to John's point, we've got a contract in place, nothing can change in the terms of the contract. So at the end of the day, it's something we definitely need to talk about, but we have been on, change, change for all practical purposes.
Correct.
Ross, just a procedural question. Do you have legal counseling in these contracts normally, or?
Yes, and when we became part of the membership, that they didn't, these resolutions are simple procedural, well, there's no, yeah. In fact, every member of the unit of this collab has the same resolution that we have right now.
All right, we had two similar but distinct motions we need to walk through here, so more to bring them up.
I would move to approve the resolution authorizing the appointment of successor trustee and custodian as presented.
Second.
Thank you, that's Dave's motion seconded by Rick to approve the resolution to change the successor trustee and custodian. Questions? All in favor of that approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I would move to approve the resolution authorizing consent to assignment of investment advisory management. Ask the other.
Second.
Thank you, that is also Dave's motion seconded by Rick to approve the changing of the investments advisory managing folks. Questions on those? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. Anything else, John? I think that was the highlights.
Was, um, can you share what, what's going on with the high school stadium?
I can speak to it a little bit, and then Ross.
I'm just kind of curious, what are the details?
We're looking at some possible options for, to address accessibility and safety concerns with the bleachers at the football field. And we talked through with Finance Committee, just the timeline and the plan that we would potentially bring something to the full board at that first board meeting in January. So we'd spend some time between now and then looking at some different options, and I will give you a proposal.
I just wanted to say that I was glad to see this on here, because I think I've brought this up a couple of times, and I think it was pushed back at least twice on the capital maintenance calendar, but there's a lot of safety and accessibility issues at this stadium, so I would appreciate it.
I want to highlight that there are concerns, clearly some concerns and some things that you could be doing differently. We're not out of compliance for accessibility with ADA, because we've been grandfathered in, in the past, but there are some things that we could be doing differently to make for a more accessible and a safer atmosphere for all of, for all of fans and students. It's on the safety side, it's not a case where there's any concern about the bleachers not being structural sound, it's more around people, especially folks that struggle with their mobility, being able to get up into the bleachers.
I don't, I don't doubt that we're in compliance or within the, when I see what other stadiums look like, what other schools have done, it's kind of embarrassing, you know, coming back, ours, ours speaking.
There's room, room for improvement.
Yeah, right.
We'll bring some, we'll bring a proposal to the board.
Hey. I would piggyback on that, say we've got a bit in the booth at the top, pretty scary. Oops. But also, is, in the planning, I know that there is discussion about possibly moving back to what, what track the discussion will go.
That's part of the discussion, but it's unlikely that that would be something that we'd be biting off right now. If they, what would What would likely bring is more of a phased approach with the bleachers being the first phase, can changes lead to.
But fair to say that we would have a long-range plan in mind with anything that we propose, so it would fit with potential.
Returns us down. Bleacher changes.
That was always the deal breaker for expanding the tracks of the bleacher for us.
Just anecdotally, FYI, the bleachers were using gate from the late seventies. Probably served their useful function. Anyway. Anything else, Rick, from the, or I'm sorry, John, from the finance committee? That's all I had. Questions? Anyone else have? Thank you, Ross. Thank you, Rick. And John. And we will roll on. I guess we're already up to miscellaneous. That would bring me to, A, the staff report, there are an original and a updated version and board docs.
I made a motion to approve the staff report, is that a second?
Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by John to approve the staff report and the update as they are presented. Questions? All in favor of approval? Signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are clearly passing that one. And then the gifts and donations.
I'll move to approve the gifts in relation with red.
Thank you. John's motion, seconded by Dave, to approve with our gratitude the gifts and donations to our district, and my list shows $22,850. So wonderful, wonderful support from our community. Questions? All in favor of approval? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Meeting dates.
There are a couple of different things that I want to talk through. This week on Wednesday, November 15th, we have an expulsion hearing for the board that starts at 5:00 P M. That will be here in the P D C. If any board members are not going to be able to make that, make sure that you let us know as soon as possible. I know we reached out with that date. Most people either said yes or I should be able to make it. So if something has come up and you're not going to be able to, definitely make sure that you let us know, because we better have a forum there. Our next meeting, we scheduled school board meeting is two weeks from tonight on Monday, November 27th at 6:30 P M. We do have, that's following Thanksgiving weekend, so we likely will be releasing that agenda prior to Thanksgiving on the week before. That same evening, we have a curriculum committee meeting, that's also on Monday, November 27th, and that's at 5:30. So that'll be prior to the school board meeting. And again, we plan to release that agenda most likely on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And we're still trying to find a date for our data workshop. We had, we looked for some dates that week of December 11th, and there weren't any dates where every board member and our admin team were all able to attend during that week. There are conflicts on each of the days that we reached out on. We did receive notice that initially the report card data from the state, they had told us it was going to be public at the end of November, and that date has been moved out. That actually is going to become public tomorrow, so we'll be releasing a press release on that and getting information out, and our school teams and district teams will be diving into that data now that it will be released publicly. But by moving that up, it would give us time to prepare for that data workshop, potentially the week earlier than the week of December 11th. So I'm wondering if, what board member availability looks like on December 7th? Is it possible for board members to take a look and see if?
What day of the week is that?
December 7th is a Thursday.
Rich, attempt any thinking?
We've been looking at, if people could make it a 5:30 start, if people can't make it that early, then we'd look at a 6 or a 6:30 start.
It's not really looking for neither.
Neither. Neither of those times work for you, Ken and Matty? Or Dave? Okay. Or Dave? Okay. Another option, and I know that our data workshop has worked best when we did it separate from a regular board meeting. We have our regular board meeting on December 11th, so we know we'll have all of our board members there on December 11th, so that's a possibility. Or we could look at some other possible dates and send out some more options to the board.
Could we move some things out of the December 11th agenda that aren't imperative? Give us enough time that evening to look at it?
Let us, let's, we'll take a look at it, at what we have on the list. That is our only, only board meeting in December, so we want to make sure we're not shortchanging things that we do need to do, but we can take a look at that and get info out. And then we're also, we're looking to schedule.
Board work, I mean, would they simply occur if they, that you have time? Or is that not?
Well, December, let's check with the board first and see if that works, and then if it does, then I'll check with our admin team tomorrow and make sure that, I want our principals to be able to be there. I know there's a couple of times in December where there's some holiday concerts at the schools and some things like that, and some training that people would yell for. But for board members, would December 4th work at our regular board meeting at 6:30? We'll check with Tracy and we'll check with our admin team, and if it works, we'll go December 4th. And then we're looking to schedule a finance committee meeting and another H R committee meeting sometime prior to that December board meeting, but I think we'll finalize the data workshop first and then reach out to those committees to find some dates. The finance committee meeting, we'd look to schedule that when as many board members as possible are available, because we will be diving a little bit deeper into some budget forecasting for next year. So we'll get information out over the next two days to board members on that topic.
All right. That it for dates. All right. We have an executive session scheduled here. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 sub 1 and sub C, which is considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Subject matter is support staff employment. So, second. Thank you. Rick's motion, seconded by John. Roll call vote. To go to executive is Dave? Yes, John? Yes, Rick? Yes, Joe is yes? Jen?
Yes.
And six, all that passes. We are not scheduled to come back to open session. Thank you both for joining us. Right.